Not the matter. It's, it's, it's a, that's what we're on the roof space.
That's why I thought twice.
You ever, I just, I never thought of one, what, when the, how they are. Minimize them?
Yeah, I had that.
So, that's based on some of the, some of the verdicts. You can be too, too, too high as to, to minimize the first in between the state. Do you have a set?
Yeah.
Do you have about six?
Yeah, yeah. We want to stack personnel. Do you?
Gotta be proper.
Unless you wanna push it back one bit. Because it's the first and third and it's kind of a storybook. Do we have something today? I think not. No, eight thirty tomorrow morning. Okay. It's just two days. Mm-hmm. Somebody okay. No, no sense already. I feel like she hasn't gone up to particularly low. We're gonna have songs in my.
When we, when we, that's when we.
And ours was lower than we were.
Yes.
It's still, it's still nine in there.
Oh, here, I'll just show you.
Where's the recording? It's in the past. There is one question.
Intersection doesn't, yeah, do you have an ask or change?
What? So why would it say? I don't know. You can go to page twenty-two from your magazine. It's the, it must've, it must've got, forget in the middle of, I don't know, it must've been printing and just came off. I was hoping for all five. We need to show it to me. Yeah, so with your printing sometimes. Do people print at once?
Call is meeting ordered. On the clock, we're flagellating. Flagellate allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic which spans one nation under God, universal, but liberty and justice for all. Rule call.
Michelle Addle.
Roy Anderson. Mark Croxer. Ben Keel. By name, Adam Tinsley, clerk. City Administrator, Barnes Swanson. Andy Pratt. City Attorney, Justin Kangis. City Engineer, Sean Derrick, City Supervisor. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
With the addition?
With the addition of City Planner and Personnel Committee.
Under, under this. I would also like to remove G from your business.
Okay, so that's needed. All right. Mark Croxer.
So what did we just add?
City Planner and Personnel Committee.
Just City Planner?
Yep. Personnel Committee. This is Personnel Committee. We need approval for the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I also add one item?
Sure.
On page two, number four, under Home Works, hydrogen flushing.
For cleanup, did he?
Hydrogen flushing.
Pardon?
Fire hydrogen flushing.
Is that a form?
Correct.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Archer, second by Otto, approve the agenda.
As amended. I don't want to, did you get that in there, Lauren?
Pardon?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended with the new additions.
All right. Motion, approval of consent agenda, the motion.
Need to call. We haven't done the original agenda yet.
Yeah, I said.
No, we, we haven't gone through.
I asked.
I have a motion by Croxer.
Motion by Mark, second by Otto.
Correct.
We're gonna vote.
Now we need to vote.
Okay, need to vote. Johnson?
Aye.
Otto?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Archer?
Aye.
I vote, I, motion carried, five over. Okay, approval of the consent agenda.
Will make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that motion. Motion by Otto, second by Ben, to approve the consent agenda. Otto, any vote?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
I vote aye. Ben?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carried, five over. Okay, and we need approval for financial statements by Mark Anson Steiner, April Dick Myers, and L.L.P.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps some, Mark will give us a short presentation.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I met with the Finance Committee today at six. We walked through the management letter and other financials, and then discussed any questions. And here tonight to present the 2013 other financials, express an unmodified opinion on the financials. And just wanted to take a minute to thank Council and the city for the opportunity to look with you once again.
Anybody have any questions for him?
Thank you.
Now we need a motion to accept financial statement.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial statement as presented to us.
I'll second.
Motion by Ben, second by Otto, to approve the financial statements. Ben, any vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Otto?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carried, five over. Report to City Departments, Commissions, and Committees. Stop City Council's month time records, March twenty-fourth.
Three of us were at the Wright County Transportation Board meeting on the twenty-seventh of March. Ben and I ended up being able to stay for the whole meeting. There were some other, there's some question about how much longer the, is it the River Rider?
Yes.
From Buffalo is going to be, I don't think they're gonna be funded after July first.
Correct.
And there is another, it's called Trailblazer Transit that is in the mix for taking over. Right now they sort of sit in the cloud counties. Basically, the meeting, we were just asked to come there, all the cities in Wright County. We basically urged our county board to go ahead and start negotiations with Trailblazer Transit to take over the transportation needs of Wright County. And it was quite a heated discussion for a while, but we agreed to do it.
Yes, you know, and some of the heat was is that there is verbal implications that the River Rider is gonna continue funding after, or have some sort of funding after July first, but there's nothing in writing. And there is no, you know, here, here's this money that will be used for us, there is no, there's no firm guarantee that we're gonna have any sort of transportation app on July first. So, you know, we urged them, you know, and it was fairly well the general consensus of everyone there to move forward looking at Trailblazer because it, it is one of our only viable options.
Was also stated and pretty much generally agreed on from all the cities that were there that if the Wright County Board did not move forward in a timely manner with their negotiations that we would come together with a kind of group from the cities representing the groups. So we would take over negotiations if we had to, but it would be much easier if the Wright County Board would do it for us.
I attended the community meeting this month. We discussed Open Gym. The Open Gym is doing very well. Our Monday nights turnout is, you know, like, it's kind of slower than Wednesday, it's like twenty people. The Wednesday night group is like almost fifty, so that's making really good progress. I also talked with, when we go to the community meetings, we meet with all different people throughout the school district. And that was some of the student council there because with the high school, because I'm also working with the student council here now in our elementary school, so that was a discussion. So the student council that's here in our elementary school is gonna be getting more involved within the community.
Highway twelve, Route thousand, we're gonna be doing more planning on the west side of Montrose, the trees and shrubs and stuff like that on the outside of town. That's going pretty good.
I gave our State of the City address on the thirteenth over in Galeno. That was very interesting scene and knowing where some of the, our neighboring cities were at with some of their plans and goals over the next year. It's just, just good to get out there and get some of the communication and seeing what they're doing in relationship to what we're doing here.
Anybody else? Well, then we'll move on with the Community Center Kitchen update. Wendy?
We've got together a timeline of what's been happening with the Community Center Kitchen over the past several months. It started back on July ninth when we contacted the soup kitchen, or contacted the Department of Health regarding the soup kitchen. And we've been working with them ever since. I guess, to kind of make it short, what we were told in the beginning and what we were told in the end have been sort of two different things. I don't know if it was a misunderstanding on her part when we talked to her. She, I think she thought the soup kitchen was run by the city, and that was why she was telling us to get the kitchen up to code because then the city could put on a soup kitchen, although we never intended of putting on a soup kitchen. And it wasn't the city that was doing it. So what we really found out in the very end was that any time an organization or anybody is going to serve food to the public, no matter if it's a caterer preparing the food and bringing it here, or if it's an organization preparing it here on site, they have to have the permit, the special event permit from the state of Minnesota. If it's a private event, like a wedding, a birthday party, a graduation, anything like that, they don't need a permit and they can use the kitchen because they're serving it to themselves by invitation, it's not open to the public. So that part of it, we were never doing anything wrong as far as letting them have birthday parties or graduations or weddings. But the fact of the, serving to the public, the organizations or whoever has to have a permit from the state of Minnesota. It's the special event license, which is three events a year, no more than ten days total throughout the year, which, with the, on three events. And I asked her to put that in writing to us, which she did. So in your packets, you can see, I, I did my timeline and then we, I attached a couple, there's some attachments. A, B, C, which is the attachments from the very first one that we received from her telling us what we had to do in the kitchen, on to the different responses, the different times that we contacted Jolene Ziegler and talked to her about it. Then I wrote to her, put it in writing and said, "This is our understanding, please verify this in writing," so we have it in writing, which she did. So, with that in mind, we had talked about upgrading the kitchen. There really is no reason for us to operate the kitchen. It would be a waste of our money because the only way it would be worth our while is if the city actually plans on hiring someone full-time to run a kitchen out of this community center. It's the only benefit it would be for us, and we never had that intention to begin with. So I know the last time the council had made a motion to have Justin go ahead with plans or hiring someone to do plans. So I don't know if we need to rescind that motion or wanna discuss it or how do you wanna, but there's really no reason to do any upgrading to our kitchen.
You said now that when they get a permit, it's good for one year?
No, it's, you can have three events in one year's time that cannot total more than ten days total. So like Montrose Days would be three days, one event, three days. But they can't total more than ten days total between all three events.
But before, it was understood it was only like ninety days, and then?
No, we always knew, once she told us that we had to have the permit, we knew that was one permit for each event. We knew that part, but she told us, originally she told us if it was catered, they didn't need a permit. Well, you do need a permit even if it's catered because it's being served out of this building.
If it's open to the public.
If it's open to the public.
You have to have a permit.
So really that's what she.
The question was that the permit was good for three times within a year.
In a calendar year.
In a calendar year.
In a calendar year.
You've got three events.
Each organization.
Each organization, yes.
So why is now three?
Right.
And what about the licensed food service person? What are the requirements there? Is that, did that fall by the wayside?
No, if you're serving to the public and you are preparing it here, like when the lions get their permit for their snow pride, they have, they have to have a licensed food service manager on site, a food service, except for health service manager.
Plus the person, plus the permit.
So, so any time the public is involved, the two factors?
Yes, yes. When the fire department uses Larry for catering, Larry is licensed.
Yes.
But they still have to have a permit because he's bringing the food from his restaurant to this building. And in fact, what she told me the other day is that he even has to carve the prime rib, they cannot, the fire department cannot carve it themselves because he's prepared that in here. So there, I mean, they do have some stipulations, but. Do you might have any other questions?
Take back that motion, I don't know.
I think we need to make sure that Justin understands we don't need that service.
I'm not sure he'll look at it.
I think all that's required is if the councils have that agreement, then that's basically the move to take any further action.
Have you taken any action so far?
Nothing major, no, just a few phone calls back and forth trying to set up a meeting, that's been all, just very basic stuff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got one question if you can hold on. So now that we aren't going to upgrade the kitchen, do we want to look into the cost of new flooring, upgrading the bathrooms?
And painting new to the walls because you can see the walls are kind of shot. I can go, you know, if you want me to, I can go back and get quotes, more recent quotes, current quotes, whatever you want, color.
That was where we were at until we discovered the problems with the kitchen, potential problems with the kitchen, and we kind of tabled it, so, yeah.
I will be coming probably to the council at our next month at the meeting with the front door. In order to do our handicap accessibility, I think there's some upgrading we need to do on that door. The bars are pretty much shot. And I had actually gotten a quote for him, from him before we did the handicap grant. I got a quote from him, I wanna say it was right around three thousand to fix that door. But I'm not sure how that would all entail with the handicap, so I'll get all that from him and get out of the handicap.
We have a timeline of that before?
By August.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll have it at the next meeting, usually once we get a quote from him or once the council approves it, he does it within a few weeks.
Right.
Mayor Department?
Good evening. Just a quick update on the truck. About three weeks ago, we met with Way from Custom, we did the pre-plans on it, pre-build, finalized all the details. So I haven't seen a printback yet, but as soon as I get one, I'll drop it off at City Hall so everybody can see what's going on, so we can share. Initially, we were looking at June, July delivery, but we found out that night that we're probably looking more later on September. There's engineering issues with the chassis, but they're working on getting squared away, so they're not, Customs not gonna give the chassis from Sparkin' until June or July. So that was a little disappointing to hear, but as long as things get squared away and taken care of upfront, I guess it's better to wait a little bit longer and have things right than push through, so. That's where we're at with that for now. Still working on the equipment for it. Probably in the next month or so, I'll be coming with bids, so we can use the equipment purchased that we're gonna be putting on it. Been going through, making a wants list of equipment that we need to get on the truck. The goal is to have both trucks on the front line, so it can go, either truck can go. So we're basically gonna do the care equipment. Not all of it, but a majority of it, so they can go either way with either truck. So that's what we'll be looking at over the next month or two here, so. For a quarterly report, just a comparison from last year to this year. Last year through end of March, we were at fifty-four calls. This year we're at thirty-six. One of the bigger differences in there is we had eight structured fires last year between our own and mutual aid calls, which also affected our man-hours. Last year, we had one thousand eighteen man-hours, and through the end of March, and this year we're sitting at five twenty-two. So having those structured fires involved in there, Jack, Chris, that are our man-hours of last year. So, but things are still busy, so that's all I have for the evening, if you got any questions?
No. Thank you, Jason. Okay, we'll move on to Park and Recreation meeting schedule.
That's me. We last, I think it was last council meeting, we discussed going quarterly for Park and Rec meetings. But on further looking into that, we've been discussing items in our personnel meetings that require, in my opinion, Park and Rec's opinion on them. We've been doing the DOD Part, Community Garden, and to me that is a part of Park and Rec. So I would like to go back to a normal schedule for Park and Rec to get them more involved in the stuff that's going on within the community. So I need to then make a motion to have one day contact of the Rec commissions to have a meeting, to go back to our normal monthly meetings.
So we would meet May sixth, that first Tuesday, May sixth?
Okay.
Oh, I'll make a motion that Park and Rec goes back to their original reading schedule for May sixth.
Did we all sign with that motion, right? Is that a major motion?
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, I vote, uh, Mark, I vote.
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, go ahead.
Um, sorry. Is the intent, Michelle, to, I think it is to re-evolve the people on Park and Rec to get more opinions through a wire net? Is the intent, Michelle, to, I think it is to re-evolve the people on Park and Rec to get more opinions through a wire net?
Correct, yeah.
About some of the things, some of the ideas that are getting kicked around?
Yeah, to get more, um, in talking with some of the Park and Rec commissions, they want to be more involved in like activities within the community. You know, getting just more community involvement, getting, you know, utilizing our parks, how we can utilize the parks and trails and that kind of stuff. So I think we need to go back to meeting month.
Anybody else? Okay, I vote, I, Mark?
Aye.
Otto?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried by- And on to public orders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I've got four items for you tonight. Item number one is, uh, last fall, we had a discussion on streetlight on Main Lane, and then a lot of money has been newly constructed, uh, Pheasant Hills Park. Uh, weather, her winter quickly approached us, so we decided to table that till spring.
And the two thousand dollar frost charge?
Correct. Well, I think spring is coming, so-
Run this back to the council for discussion.
So eighty-four hundred dollars for one streetlight, correct?
That is correct.
I continued to do some research on, on the solar panel streetlights, solar powered streetlights. And I have been researching especially companies that deal with like Northern Hemisphere, less light, places in Canada. And for about half the price, you know, I realized that part of the expense is because we're tied into the Trump line and it has to do with XL. That is correct. For about half the price, I'm thinking that, you know, we've had some discussion about this, and I would like to just present it to the council that this could be a, a, a beta test, you know, for, for- The batteries on these things are, have a five-year maintenance schedule on them. They're marching down to forty zero. There's, uh, what do they say? Four to six days with no sunshine, and it will still work at like twenty-three hundred lumens. And which is almost double the standard streetlight as far as output, so because they're LED technology, you know. So it's something that I would like to consider. Do I have the council consider?
What did you say the council?
Uh, the, the most expensive one that I found was one that came with its own pole, the battery, a metal pole, all part painted, and everything else. It was, I believe, forty-eight hundred.
Installed?
Uh, no, not installed.
We would have to install that then?
Yep.
And Sean, could you do something? You could?
Most certainly.
Okay. So that, does it look like a-
It does not look like our, there are, I believe there are four different styles, but there's nothing that looks like the newer, the ones that are like an Emerson. You know, there's nothing that looks like that, but that would also be a consideration too. But it, you know, it's the, it's the cost that is just flooring it.
The cost of that?
That might have gone-
Eighty-four hundred for the one streetlight?
So we would get two streetlights for that?
How much area do you think lights will?
Um, I, I, you know, this was just all, when I saw it in the notes, I just had come across the stuff again today. I pulled it back out and, and found, you know, there are some places like out Florida and stuff that make streetlights, but they don't deal with the cold. So I specifically was searching for, for companies that are dealing with guarantee the cold weather and the lower sun angles during the winter. And the larger batteries and the larger solar panels that can collect more power. So it did narrow it down to there are three or four companies that do it for the northern climes. But that's about as far as I got. I, I, I could bring more information, but you know, I realized that-
Well, what, we need one on Mainy Lane and one on Pheasant Hills Park?
Do we have the name of companies, perhaps?
Uh, yes. I do have the name of the one that I have been talking about. It's DS Three Solar.
See out there in Pheasant Hills Park, we wouldn't have to worry about matching up with any lights because that's kind of by itself.
It's kind of shady out there too.
I think we should look further into this because both locations do need lights. I mean, we go on Mainy Lane all the time, but-
I would strongly urge not going with solar lighting on the streetlights, or streets.
So not doing?
On Mainy Lane.
Okay. Why?
Just for the fact that it's not tied into regular power, and I believe that there is some standards associated with the streetlights. Is that correct, Justin?
There's a standard L, uh, Lumen candle, candle light, yes.
A requirement?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't know about the requirements, but there is a standard, industry standard for street, for light on a city street, yes.
Based on the type of street, traffic level and stuff like that.
This would also match every other streetlight that's in town too.
The eighty-four hundred dollar streetlight one?
Correct.
That's nice.
Is the, are all our parks, um, have lights up?
No.
Yes.
I think that Pheasant Hills Park is located just off a bike trail. That's not lit either. You know, we've talked a couple, at a couple of different occasions about the kind of the backyard trails in town.
Yep.
That could use some additional lighting for safety reasons as well.
Then I'm conflicted because I wouldn't want light in my backyard.
Yep.
I do have one in my backyard, no, but I wouldn't want light in my backyard. Our parks are supposed to be closed at dusk, right?
Yep, but trails?
Trails are not, and I have run into people that walk the trails, especially in the winter time, you know, it's pitch black at six o'clock, so.
Or kids biking at dusk.
It's the same way on Mainy Lane. Kids are biking Halloween.
Yeah, you said mid-block is pitch black.
Yeah.
But here we got to go with XL one hundred D on Mainy Lane?
Yes, yes, we do.
We have to?
Yep.
Tell them to club with a better price.
I've done a lot of negotiating to get that price, Mayor.
Man.
Uh, installation crews' schedules are quickly filling up also. We don't necessarily need a decision tonight that would put us in a better placement for installation this summer.
Did we figure out our budget that we're paying for?
Yes, we did.
I can't remember, so.
I think we're pulling that out of the general fund?
Capital improvements. Oh, capital improvements, yeah.
I'm perfectly willing to, if, if the council wants to maybe use Pheasant Hills Park as a, as a trial for the solar light. There's the same type of lights that can be, what do you think about that, Sean, for that?
I think it's a great place to try it.
Is it too shady? That's it. I can't, don't know the location as well as you.
How come?
I think it'll be fine.
How come that light was only going to cost fifty-five hundred and now it's going to cost eighty-four?
It's the fixture light bulb.
It's a different, it's not the same style.
Uh, one on Mainy Lane would be the old metal type like on the other streetlights.
The gate.
Um, one in Pheasant Hills Parks would be a night watch with an R.
Just like the ones that are up there.
Correct, yeah.
Slight ones that come out without, like most.
On County Road Twelve walking trail would be real similar to that, where it shines down.
No, I agree too, but that'd be a good place to try one of the solar lights.
Those, those shoebox style or ones that point down to limit the light pollution like Mark was concerned about having light in backyard? That style of light provides less light pollution than what an Ankor style light does, so it directs the light more down the right direction of the trail.
Also, um, if you happen to drive by the lift station on First Street over here at night, we have switched that to LED already. It doesn't seem like there's as much light output as there used to be on the traditional styles, but there's plenty there, and it's a sixth of the cost for running it too.
Which lift station?
First Street, and then also at Mullen Mills, we installed one there too. It's actually got a better warranty on those than the traditional ones.
She got the logging lights, she got two of them.
Yeah. And then if we do decide to do that logging trail from County Road Twelve over to Emerson, I think that would be an advantage to us to try that there too, if we feel that this is a success. There's going to be significant underground wiring on that one.
So that's, you mean going to the solar trial?
Sure, yeah.
So, Mark, can you put that information in, Sean?
I, I, wait, Sean, you want it or forward it to, right to?
I'll take it, Mark.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So then we need a motion to approve?
We need a motion to approve solar light for Pheasant Hills Park?
Uh, no, we're, I think we're talking about the Mainy Lane, streetlight.
Yeah.
You probably just want people to tell you, find out more information. Uh, well, no, I'm, if I'm hearing what Sean is saying, what Justin's saying, that we really, they really want a, a light that's tied into our grid system. Because it's going to be surface cameras, and it'll be the same type of light that's on the streets, on all of our streets, streets out there right now. And then the Pheasant Hills Park one, I, I will forward him the information on the solar lights. And, yep, then we will get more information from the council as far as the cost. And what Sean thinks it will cost them to put the pole up and stuff like that. Right, Sean?
That's fine.
Then we need a motion for the one from Mainy Lane for eighty-four hundred, then?
That's correct.
The money you budget for that coming?
Yes, sir, that's-
I'll make a motion then to go ahead and put the light up at Mainy Lane. I'll second that. Motion by Lloyd, second by Henry. Streetlight on Mainy Lane, that's quarter of eighty-four hundred. Mark, I vote?
No, I just can't.
Michelle?
It's for the safety, so aye.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote, I, motion carried for all. That's four one, I mean. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Can't win them all. Okay, and we got certification of commendation for wastewater treatment facility staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, back in last month, uh, the MPCA conducts a annual award ceremony. And, um, several years in a row, we received this, uh, award through the MPCA for no violations whatsoever in the wastewater plant for last year. That's over, that's over two thousand samples per year, so we have to sample, so. Good job to the staff there. And then next, page thirty-one of your packet, uh, we're approaching spring season, summer season again, and it's customary that we, uh, look at and hire two summer seasonal employees. Some of the previous employees that we've had for the last couple of years have moved on and no longer wish to work for the city. So we need to advertise for two seasonal positions this summer. Uh, advertise right away and come back at the May meeting to approve for hire.
Did you ever think, Sean, about hiring this out? I have outfits come in and do this to see what they would charge?
We have looked at that, and just to mow a wastewater plant alone, we need our budget up for the two employees, just to mow the plant. Um, the city's also made a significant investment in mowing equipment. We're on a rollover program through John Deere. Um, we initially purchased lawn mowers new for sixteen grand apiece. And every year, we get new ones and we just pay for ours. So as far as the equipment, um, we can't really be in a better situation because we get new equipment every year. We're not working on it as much as the plywood tire here and there, but like I said, just to mow the wastewater plant alone is, is close to thirty-five acres there.
Yeah.
And if we get a company in here to mow that, it would be not advantageous.
Now, these newer lawn mowers now, they got thicker plywood tires on them for grass cutting out there, it just all course to wreck the tires all the time?
No, they're the standard tires that's always coming.
And four ply?
Yeah, but we do have rules though.
Make a motion to, for Sean to prepare to, to start advertising for two summertime seasonal employees?
I'll second.
Motion by, uh, second by Otto to provide two seasonal employees. Otto, I vote?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
I vote, I, Mark?
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Thank you. So if you know anybody that's wanting to work, uh, point it forward to City Hall.
Eighteen and Albernight?
Correct.
Okay, and we got number four, Sean?
Yes, the last item on my list is, uh, our spring hydrant flushing. Uh, we're looking at doing that the week of May fifth. This is an informational, uh, there will be a notice going in the paper also. Just if you notice any discoloration in the water while it's being performed, just let it run until it runs clear, and then it'll just be a little bit of sedimentation that's settled in the pipes over there, so it's no big deal.
Did we put it in the newsletter?
Uh, I don't think so.
I don't believe it's in the newsletter.
So that'll be going out of the paper, and I thought I'd throw it in here, maybe that can get it plugged for us too, so.
I'll see where she's at with that.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old business, we got nothing on that. We'll move on to new business with A, B, and C, Community Garden. And request the council action with Jim Huckbridge, and request the council action with Chris at Anderson. Mark, Michelle, whatever.
Um, I'm, can I start? You there?
I go, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Um, on page thirty-two, uh, we've been in the discussion in our personnel meetings about the community garden, the location of it and, um, the upkeep of it, that kind of stuff. Now, page thirty-two, it says located at the intersection of Arapahoe and Aspen Lane, but it has not been moved yet, so I'm not sure why. It's only in the discussion of movement, so I'm not sure why it says... Because it's actually in Northridge Park right now, so...
You're right, it is in Northridge Park. I was just putting the rules together based on our conversation. Um, also, I did give everybody copies of the... Your numbers of the park and there's extras on the garden, I'm sorry, on the table.
Okay. Uh, in the start, we've been in discussion for probably, you know, often not for over a month. The community garden that is currently in Northridge Park, um, the upkeep of it, the use of general rules, regulations, all that kind of stuff. So, um, I have been in contact with the citizens that are out in... Using that facility right now. So that's the two people that are in for now for council action. Um, amongst these three pictures that we have, when we received these pictures, um, last week I believe it was, I did go back and talk to the the members that are out there and kind of tried to explain to them our expectations and that kind of stuff, so these pictures right now, everything is all coming up actually. So, um, all the hole, all the green holes that you see, the wood and everything you see, everything is all out of there, taken care of. So, um, in your package is the the rules and regulations that we are looking at and commenting and, um, and like I said, I did go and talk to the members that are out there, so Teresa and Jim, do you wanna come up and speak to the council?
Council? Council, if you would look at page thirty-four with, uh, the map of Aspen and Arapahoe, we have, uh, talked with Sean and, uh, some of the rest of city staff and, um, some complaints about Northridge, uh, community gardens are, first of all, access. Um, this garden proposed, if you can see right at the corner, it would be of Aspen and Arapahoe. We have access for... Yeah, okay, thanks, Wendy. We have access, there's a curb cut out there for, um, can cap accessibility and there are two, if I believe, there are two hydrants that are, Sean?
That is correct.
And we... It's fairly flat ground. And there's parking there on Arapahoe, which is now a through street. Um, so those were some of the considerations that I did... Michelle did tell me that the Spark kids, where do they come from and they go to?
Beverly Hills Park. Or no, Beverens Park, like Beverens Park.
They come from Beverens Park and they go to, uh, Northridge Park. So I draw it today, it is, and using the back way from the entrance of Northridge Park to, um, this intersection of Arapahoe and Aspen going, uh, going down Emerson, not going out on the highway. It's, uh, six tenths of a mile. Almost three blocks. Um, so...
Yes, from Northridge to Arapahoe?
The Northridge to, uh, the proposed new community garden site. Um, what else? Some other complaints I've got, and myself to be, uh, Northridge Park user, is the way the garden is left in the state that it's left in and, um, we are one of the only communities that I know that do not have a set of rules for the community garden and do not charge for the plots, don't keep track of it, don't have any rules. And we would like to retain control of when the... When it is till as you can see right now from the pictures, we couldn't go out there until right now if we wanted, we'd have to pay somebody to go out there and clean up the mess. So those were some concerns that were expressed to me and my own concerns. Hopefully that might answer some questions, but please come forward and let's talk.
Well, um, first of all, what is the plan for the Northridge Garden?
If... If we go to the proposed site of Arapahoe and Aspen, the Northridge Garden, do we want to? Why? Do we... We... Right now we have the Spark kids use the front part of the whole garden and there are four plots besides that?
There's four total.
Four total?
I believe it's the Spark, um, girls scout area. Uh, Jones?
Mm-hmm.
Two pieces. And then another jump in the middle.
I think there's four plots, I believe.
My proposal would be to put a community garden in every single park. Because do you realize in the city, there are seventy-five kids in our elementary school right now having to bring home a backpack of food every weekend? So what happens during the summer? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. Those kids go hungry every summer.
So they're bringing home food from a food shell or something?
Correct.
Okay, I see.
So those kids are normally in that Spark program?
Yep.
So that's where they get their food in.
Okay, um, question, in the middle of the summer when the kids are at school, how many kids are actually there tending to their portion of that garden as far as weeding and... Or is it just mainly used for, uh, they do their, what, uh, meal months and stuff at the end of the season?
Um, Fridays. Fridays, the kids go out and chil... And help weed and whatever the garden. Uh, but if you don't realize, there's also another community garden right over this door.
No, that's not a community garden, that's a private garden.
It's private.
It's on city property.
It's on city property, it's on private land.
It's... That's owned by the gentleman that owns those two of the buildings.
Yes.
That's his garden.
Okay. All right, and they sure look pretty big to me.
That's his private garden.
Okay. But no, I would recommend a city garden for every single park that we have, which is eight parks. Then that way, kids and families have access to be able to grow and support their own families with the produce that they grow. That would be my recommendation.
Well, and all for the double and more to plots that we have right now. And if there proves to be a waiting list, we... With this spot, we didn't...
Right, some kids... Some of those people can't even drive to that park. Some people, that's why, that's why I'm thinking that if we can have one in every garden, in every park, you... Every... Everybody has access, walking access to a park. We have... We have pu... Put our parks in general facility areas so that everybody has access. If we put it in one location, not everybody's gonna be able to get there. Some people can't drive. Some people just don't have the resources to get there. So if we open it up to every single park, we would have more involvement with Sparks, with Girl Scouts, with, um, Boy Scouts. I'm sure I can get a lot of volunteers if we can open it up.
Do all of our parks have room available for community gardens?
I've planned those parks and I'm gonna say yes.
Okay.
Um, so in... In reference to these rules, can you explain to me what the water rule is? Water is available for watering gardens, however, no fertilizer may be applied to the city water. What does that mean?
That means no fertilizer can be applied through the use of water holes.
We're... We have to protect the city aqua for.
If you're using like Miracle-Gro container on the end of the water holes?
Oh, right, yeah, yeah, no, no.
Then we had a backflow that would suck that fertilizer into the city water.
Okay. I didn't really think that was, okay. Um, the other part of it is, um, the whole registration piece of it. Um, that community garden has been open for the last...
Six years.
Six years?
Yep.
This gentleman's been doing that garden for the last six years and has the potential of losing his spot. And the whole reason for gardening in the first place is to tend, is to treat, to nurture that plot of land so that you have a prosperous garden, which costs money. My husband alone has put a hundred dollars in the last three years with peat moss, dirt, manure, because those... Those plots are all like... There's... There's no way... Yeah, there's no cost to it.
I love Emerson, we have our own garden and I spend...
It's awful.
I spend, uh, probably forty dollars a year in dirt.
Correct. And so to be able to lose that spot because we don't... We don't register in time or whatever, to me that's a waste of money. How do you propose?
My question is, what is egregious the wrong about the garden?
Uh, well, I... The first thing off the top of my head is, uh, let's see the picture with the wood.
Yep, those are mine. It snowed several days after Thanksgiving and I did not have a chance to get them out. If you notice, the other eight are gone. And there were live plants. We were out of town pretty much two-thirds of November. Uh, there were live Brussels sprouts and there were live herbs in those beds.
No.
Which I... I left them out there as long as I could and it just covered the snow by the time I had a chance to remove them.
Before the city was able to till the garden, those were up already this year, the last spring, correct?
Uh, I specifically talked to the city and I asked them not to till my section, right? They said, "No problem, we won't till it." So, yeah, I was out there before the city could till, which, July? I think it was July that things got tilled. Now, if anyone's ever gardener, you can't plant in July and expect to have a crop, right?
And actually, I don't think last year that nobody came and tilled, we had to till it ourselves.
And before that, it was June and before that it... It's too wet, is what I told them. "That's fine, I take a tiller out there and do it myself." That's less work the city has to do, less dollars for the city to spend, right?
No, because, uh, the... Every single other community, they control when it gets tilled. What if you were having a dispute? What if you were having a dispute with somebody else that had a corner plot and you decided that you weren't gonna till their garden for them? What if you were having a dispute with a neighbor that had a corner plot and you decided that you weren't gonna till their garden for them or you were gonna charge them?
That's their problem.
No, it... Because it's a community garden, that would make it our problem.
So what are we trying to solve?
I'm trying to solve...
I understand. What is so... Like I said, what is so wrong about the way things have been out in my garden? You... Okay, yeah, I left the beds out there because I couldn't get them out before, but it snowed, right? So what? How many complaints? Who has complained about this? How many complaints has the city received about it?
Enough to bring it to my attention.
How many?
Enough to bring it to my attention.
What?
Uh, I've gotten a complaint, I've complained, I've gotten at least three to myself. How many works guys have complained to me?
What's wrong with it?
It's not getting cleaned up, okay?
Here's the pictures. If you want those. Can I stop in for a minute?
Please.
Okay. Um, when we had this discussion, like I said, like a week ago when these pictures were taken, um, I was kind of surprised myself about this because I was under the understanding that these things were taken out. So I did go and I did talk to Teresa and Jason, which is her husband, who's not there tonight. And Jim came... Didn't get with enough, but, um, so Jim came and then we went to their backyard and I said, "You know what? You guys, you need to understand that this is what the problem is." And I don't think that they realized that they had, because this is...
There was no warning.
Four people gardens. So what it is right now is these same four people have been out there for six years. So they've just always kept the green stakes out there to have their sections. And those are what is not being taken out. Um, as Jim's... As Jim had talked about, the wood boxes aren't taken out every year, except excluding this year because it grows in there. So with me going out there and talking to them about this, all of this is being cleaned up. They did it right there because they were not in the understanding that they had to take out the tools. That was outlining their space, so...
Thank you, Michelle.
And actually, you know, when I did go out there, I was actually pretty impressed by... I actually thought the one area, that if you guys look on your forms here, this area right here, I thought I did already been tilled up because of the amount of money that they have put into it and maintaining it, because it looked like it was partially tilled because of this, you know, the soil and stuff that they would have put in there, so...
It's killed by a storm.
What's that?
It's probably killed by a storm.
No, there was no killing, that'll...
No, with a... With a door.
No, but it's just...
Yeah, it was fresh, we had it fresh. And we re... Well, uh, okay, my husband re-handled it with a... Great. That bomb.
Part of the conversation we had is the location and ease of access and actually people knowing that it was there. You know, and...
There is... And the thing, there is a...
I'm familiar with the area. But if this other location is easier access because there's roads on both sides, it would be generally more visible, so other people in the community would know it's there. I think a lot of issues, people don't even know that there's a garden in that location.
Right.
It's easy... Easier...
Can it just be luck at home? Jim, for you?
Yeah.
You were on Fairmont, so your... Your property just... Just plugs right up against the car?
Yes, sir, which is one of the things I absolutely love about it.
Yeah.
And them too.
So rather than gardening in your yard, use the community garden?
Yeah, well, I... I use it for two... For two reasons. My own and then for my Girl Scouts. Um, they... They love it, they absolutely love it. Um, and that's why I'm kind of saddened to see that there's gonna get charged for a plot. Um, twenty dollars isn't... Isn't bad, but it's twenty dollars out of somebody's pocket. And, um, and if it... To cover water, um, I know last year I have... I guess with all... Somebody got their pool filled for free with city water. So why charge?
Are you saying they got the...
They got...
From that nature? Yeah, it's out there? And used?
No, 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 no. Um, a... A water truck. A city water truck came to their house and filled their pool for them. The Higgins house. On that Emerson.
Interesting.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility of leaving the garden where it is now in Northridge? Or is the council already made up its mind?
Well...
No, we haven't.
No. Um, that is what we... What I talked about earlier, bringing parking rights back into this stuff.
Uh, that is gonna be my next question. Does this fall under park and recs authorities?
I... I think it does because it is within the park and that's why I'd like parking laws to bring in on it.
Okay. But keep in mind, the park and recs are gonna be issues to the council. Right. Right. But if the recommendation starts, then...
So my next question is, is so will these rules, if we do a part... A community garden per park, will these rules apply to all the parks?
If they're adopted?
If they're adopted.
Maybe I would guess if they're adopted, citywide.
Yeah, okay.
But these are, as spokesman Otto said, these are draft rules, nothing's been approved.
This is just for the...
This is for grinder station.
And I would recommend, um, because we grow our pumpkins out there for our Halloween dance, pumpkins for Girl Scouts, if we can extend that clothes date a little later, um, to the end of... End of this October or beginning of November, um, because we don't normally harvest those pumpkins until...
Till November first, I think.
Yes.
Right now there are four plots out there, correct?[1780.14]
So what if we get eight more people, eight additional people from our neighborhood out there that want to use the community garden? How would you propose? And not even addressing the problem of handicap people that are trying to get access to the park out there because of the park you're not supposed to drive in, in this park, correct?
Right.
How would you address the problem of everyday people just going out there and wanting to find a spot?
How would that be any different than the park that's out there?
Yeah, because right now, there is a driving spot, but it stops short even to the park.
Yeah, I know that.
Yep. So if we can extend that driveway, I mean, that park is huge. We could put a lot of garden space there. And we could probably do like a walking trail. You know, because right now, there's supposed to be a walking trail from the one end to the other. If we can extend the walking trail...
That was part of Woodside's proposal from the final stage of development. Woodside went out of business.
Right.
So that's never going to happen as far as Woodside goes. The only way a walking path's going to get put out there is if we get together as neighbors and do a fundraiser and look for a matching grant from the federal government to get that walking path finished.
I would totally agree with that.
That is expensive.
I would totally agree.
And I'm glad you would because now you're on my list. And I will be putting the touch on you because there are a lot of people that want the trails in Montrose connected so that all our communities are on our little neighborhoods.
Well, and here's the other part, here is... So, no, I would totally agree with that. I think that would be, that would, one, create access and, two, open up the park so that people know that it's there.
See, the problem is, is right now, there's no structure. Do you agree that we have to have some rules as far as plot goes, as far as if...
Yes, I would agree with that.
If there's somebody out there that's not maintaining a garden, they should get it fixed there. You know, that could ruin it for somebody that's well-maintained garden.
The only thing that I would say is, when I brought this up, thinking of last year, they spray mosquitoes out there, it's killing my garden.
And the herbicides don't help anyway.
Exactly.
The herbicides?
Yeah.
They get sprayed at least in the spring. I'm not sure about the rest of the summer.
Yeah, so the Tuesdays and Thursdays of mosquitoes spraying, it kills half my garden every year.
I sure appreciate that, though, that's crazy.
I do appreciate it, but if they can keep away from the garden area, I'd be totally okay with that. But at the same time, it's hot and nasty out there. So I do think that park is not worth developing. I think, because right now, there's playground area, there's a volleyball court, there's lights out there. I mean, it's got a good structure, the zones to start something. I just think we need to finish it. And a community garden would be a good, it's a good spot because it's all day sun. They get, you know, they get what they need and there's hiding out there. I don't, yeah, I think it is the perfect spot.
I agree. I think we already have a place that has access. We already have a place that has the curb cutout, we have parking, we also have water there.
It wouldn't take much to do a parking, it wouldn't take much to do a parking. Because how much did it take to put a parking guide on that disc golf course? Which is...
Costs a lot of money.
Five grand?
Five grand.
And that's just for dirt, you know, because you have to take off all that toss or all that...
But again, you guys are also looking at that park, the dog park.
What are the blue markers in the park?
That's the dog park.
I don't believe so.
Yes.
There are, there are blue markers.
There are markers out there.
That was the layout for the dog park so we can measure two-way fence. That was the layout for the dog park so we can measure how many feet of chain link fence it would take. Was?
Yeah, you want to find out the sticker shop? Anyway. Can plots out there be grandfathered in in any way, shape, or form? It's not like they were in last year and one year later, there was one person out there and it was all weeds. It's been tended out there for quite a while, right?
I don't think, you know, when that was sort of suggested that we have a community garden out there, I don't know that it was ever considered a permanent site. You know, I don't know that that was the intent. You know, I think, Wendy, if you could, you know the long-range plan for that park more than I do. I think there's some...
Actually, if we could finish that park and put a shelter out there, it'll be right where the community garden is.
That close to people's yards?
Well, right in that area because that's where the water and sewer lines are.
Is there no easement or anything on how far a structure can be from the back of the property line?
No.
Just a minute, let me finish.
I mean, that's right, okay, sorry.
It would be on that side of the park where the community garden area is, in that area. Not right on the property line, but in that area because that's where our water and sewer lines are. That's where the water and sewer lines come into the park. So the shelter would be on that side of the park. Now, probably not right on top where your garden is now, but it would be right in that area.
That vicinity.
But that's right on it.
But what kind of structure are you going to put there that would need water and sewer?
Well, if you put in a shelter that had bathrooms and running water, if we finish off the park.
It's designed for sports field, but it's a elevator park. So there's long-range plans for that park.
So what kind of sports fields are you talking?
I think there's a ball field.
At one time, there was a ball field. At one, when the developer made, did the plans originally for that park, there was a ball field in that park.
There was a ball field built in there this last summer.
That was a pizza field. That was a pizza field, not a pizza field, pizza field.
So are you building a ballpark or building a structure there anytime in the near future?
Probably not.
No, I would say no.
Well, it's still hard to figure out if you're staying there until it is time to develop a park.
I'm just saying that it wasn't a permanent...
Then we shouldn't have done it there.
In the reality, when we first...
The first word you suggested, put the, leave it. You just said we shouldn't have put it there to begin with.
The community garden.
Then don't have one. I wasn't here when it was planned. I don't know what was available. I don't know, but it's there now.
Yeah.
Leave it alone.
In the first year it went there, we actually, when it was tilled, everybody was supposed to come up and sign up if they were going to use a plot. And we had a few people come up and sign up.
Right.
But nobody, everybody, just whoever was out there, they signed up one year and then nobody came back and signed up again. And I don't know if you guys signed up originally, I have no idea. Because I wasn't doing it at the time.
I think we did originally.
Yeah, I think Chris was doing it at the time. So I don't know, you know, what ever happened after that.
So I'm just going to make a suggestion here. As I, I think it needs to go back to Park and Rec, get some of their input on this. Rules do need to be applied, you know. I know you guys don't agree with that, maybe not well, but, you know, that is stuff that can also be worked on. And I would make a recommendation that the people that are out there get to keep the plots just because, as I stated, they put hundreds of dollars and lots of time into it. And that is the whole prospect of having a garden is to maintain it. For those of us that do have gardens, you know, you bring in that manure and all that, you know, all that kind of stuff, that we do, you just maintain it every year so that your fruits and vegetables grow. So I, in this, I don't think it should be a first-come, first-served basis as it says. It should not be a priority. It should, the priority should be for the people that have been out there. So we can bring it back to Park and Rec, you know, get their input on it.
When's the next meeting?
Park and Rec?
May 6.
May 6. We just discussed that earlier. So, and that meeting is at seven o'clock at City Hall. Is everybody able to?
Yeah, I'm just... To be honest, it started in January, so it'll be planned in December.
It's getting closer to planning.
Yeah.
So for the time being, if I, for whatever reason, take a tiller out there in two weeks, my plot, is the city going to come till it in a few weeks?
Well, you haven't registered for a garden, there's no rules. I would say right now, you should apply.
Where is it? Is it registration form here?
I think that approved yet.
But it's May 15, which is tomorrow.
April 15.
Yeah, April 15, which is tomorrow.
We don't have...
Yeah, but we haven't, we can't do this one.
At least it's not adopted.
So they're writing in pass, then?
So I've got one question. If this site were approved and stays, would the plots be the same as they've always been? Or would you re-figure them, or what's your plan?
Sorry, what's that talking about?
If we approve this, it stays over at that? And are you going to continue to use the same space, or do you want a smaller space, bigger space?
I'd like to continue on the same plot that I've been pouring nutrients into for...
Which plot is yours?
The one...
The wood box.
So on the eastern side?
So how big roughly is your area?
Ah, twenty...
About sixty feet wide.
Maybe forty.
I meant it to be sixty.
It's sixty. Because each one of the beds was four by four and we had five of us, so twenty, a foot in between, wherever it is. Wow. We've got a strip on the east side, we can use it.
So I'm happy for these other tenants then.
Mine, mine is the one that's like all...
This is going to be same adjacent. This is the butterfly garden. Thank you.
Really? Mine is, I just hollered today. Yeah.
She would, she would help out, but they cannot come out to maintain, just so you know that.
Right, but if she can help, if she can donate the plot, the...
She said she would do whatever they can to...
We'll do it.
You know?
The girls can do it.
So, but right now, they cannot come out to maintain or anything like that.
Yeah, that's fine. Anything else?
So hold on for the time being, guys. I mean, making it get out there and start working soil.
You might have to wait until Park and Rec decide and it's got to come in seventh or eighth.
Do you have a turning point or question?
Andy, come on in. So you and my manager checked here for a second. This is, you know, a lot less of policy discussion for the council. Park and Rec may need to consider. It seems to me that we have an option of going into this year with, because of the timing and setting up, continuing the way you've been having it. While you come up with a comprehensive scheme of regulation, basically rules for either a new park in a new location, I'm sorry, new garden in a new location, or a re-jiggered garden in this location. There really are no rules right now, so it's sort of something where, just answer how it runs if you're a gardener, answer the city. So you could try to adopt something now for the short-term convenience, so to speak, to go forward with the Northridge Park Garden. Why come up with comprehensive rules for the Northridge Park Garden, Part Two, or a Rappahoe Aspera Garden? That's maybe a plan B to consider. I don't want to, you know, not, I don't know the details at all, but that would be something just, because there's really no structure right now. So you can sort of at least have a chance now to do a short-term fix while you come up with a long-term plan.
I think actually that's a good suggestion. Only because...
Well, it's going to be kind of late, but I mean, I'm a farmer myself, so I like to have a plan before May 1st. Agreed?
Agreed.
And with the schedule of Park and Rec meetings and council meetings, it's not going to work for you to have a, something in place for this year, really. By the time it will be in place, it'll be July, I understand, so that's something to consider.
I have had a couple of phone calls at City Hall with interest in using the community garden. I told them they couldn't sign up until tomorrow. So I will need some direction from the City Council on how they can vote.
Okay, I'm going to make the motion then, if that's what's needed, to let the citizens sign up starting tomorrow. Go ahead and continue as we have been because we cannot meet with Park and Rec until May 6.
What does the other one run holes until?
Until we met with Park and Rec. But in the meantime, let these guys go ahead, register their garden. Can they go ahead and till it?
Go ahead and do their tilling.
So I've got a question with that. We've got other residents that are expressing interest. And this park is full. I really don't want to expand this park or this community garden. I would rather put another garden on Arapaho just for the fact that it's much better soil, easier access for handicap people. And it'll be a different layout to where we can control it a lot easier than what this one is.
But we're only doing this temporarily.
However, we've got other residents that have expressed interest in their own garden that we don't have room for.
Well, we could, if we go ahead with that Arapaho deal, then we can...
That's fine with me. I just want to make sure that we get this in this area.
So have two gardens then? Because if we go ahead and let these guys go... Well, right. Or expand a one at Northridge.
No, Mark, I don't...
Sean says no.
There's no use to expand that one for thinking...
Right now, we have accessibility issues, there's no parking. Everybody's going to have to park down the street and walk all the way back here with their tools and whatnot. It's a much easier fix over here on this Arapaho, in my opinion.
And right now, if we would get, let's just say we get five more people that want to use the community garden, there is no spot for them. Are they all filled now? Yeah. Well, then we'd have to build more anyway, so then we could do those on Arapaho. So that, did you make an amendment?
I'll start.
We're still in a motion.
A motion that has not been sent yet, to let the citizens sign up starting tomorrow, April 15, and to continue as is.
For the Northridge Park Garden.
So that is a somewhat first-come, first-served scenario.
Yeah, it will be because that's the way the original plan is, until we can operate any rules or regulations.
And that's true because right now, there really aren't any rules, so.
I will ask the council to consider the length of time of the people that have been out there and ask that at least to a degree, those plots be grandfathered in until the city sees fit to use that area for other purposes, pavilion, baseball field, whatever it is. And because the precedent has been set for six years, however many years now, right? And then if there are new people that, hey, I have a garden, started at Arapaho and... Ask them, thank you. And that way, going forward, that satisfies the city's need to administer things, right? It's in control then. And satisfies our need to continue guarding in the spots that we have for many years.
Without increasing the footprint.
Without it, because the precedent was set, right? And I think, and using it where it is precedent, it was deemed as acceptable at the time to do that without any amendment. So...
I need a second on what was there. I don't have a second.
Well, that was a pretty long motion.
Should I read it? Let the citizens sign up starting tomorrow, April 15, continue as is as far as the Northridge Art Garden. That's the motion that, there is no second.
Right, can we amend that before we second it?
No.
No, I'll back that.
I'll second that. Discussion? Can we, can we give the Northridge Park gardeners the preference to stay there? Anybody else that wants to come and ask about a sign up would be then directed to the... Anybody else that wants to come and ask about a sign up would be then directed to the different location at Arapahoe and Aspen.
Then we would have two gardens, two community gardens.
And this garden will then be plotted and available, and everybody's going to be the same size, the city's going to till, maintain it. Is that, and that works for you guys? Then Park and Rec will then hopefully get involved, and the same rules will apply for both gardens next year. But as far as grandfathering in, I'm, you know, they're open for that, you know, I understand you guys, people that, one of the complaints, people that live there think it's their park and their park only, and their dogs get to use the park, and the rest of us pick up.
But remind me, why are there two way stations and then a rule that says no pets are allowed in the park?
That's right, we have lease loans now.
Right.
Yep.
But there's two way stations in that park, so if you're walking your dog...
If you're walking your dog, yeah, there's way stations all over the city if you want...
Right, but there's two in that park, right, right next to the playground.
Yeah. So if you want to get Stefan...
No, 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 it says, there's no dogs in the park, it says, in here.
People cut through there all the time, you guys live there, you don't have a dog.
This is the park rules, this is the park rules. So this would be inside your gardening area, no dogs are allowed.
No pets are allowed.
So just in the gardening area, you guys are telling up, have your produce, that's where no, no dogs are allowed.
So any more?
The only thing, the only last comment I have to make is, so I'm the new person, I want a new garden, and my garden's 20 by 20, and how come he gets a garden that's 60 by 60?
Can we give out your number?
I'm just saying, well, it's going to, it's going to, I can assure you, the question will come.
They were there, we were establishing plots before. If, if we're going to be going to a first come, first served, it was a first come, first served basis at the time.
Well, in our motion though, isn't it said that these guys get to keep their area, anybody that signs up now goes to, if approved, to Arapahoe and Aspen, so then it would be plotted out equally?
We were talking about 20 by 20 plots.
Which would be at Arapahoe and Aspen, not with any new person would go.
Right, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't...
They wouldn't even be in this park.
They wouldn't know what...
We would then have two gardens.
Our question still stands. Why can't I have a 60 by 40?
So if I can cut the size of my garden down to, what, 400 square feet, is that acceptable?
I don't think ours is, but I'm measuring. I'm not telling you that you have to do that, I have, what I might, I would like to second this, this motion and vote it down, and do a different motion that encompasses both gardens, and let you guys stay grandfathered in, tell Park and Rec deals with you guys as far as the matching rules go and everything else. Maybe the size of your footprint will get a little smaller, I don't know, it's not up to me, I hopefully will be able to, the Park and Rec. But because of time, you know, you guys are up against it as far as parents go, so it's going to be a crunch to see the other one plotted and taken care of.
I do have to add a comment though, I have, before we go on that is, before you go on that, is if you're going to accept signs tomorrow, certainly I hope that you would sign up tomorrow, because there might be a problem if you get a bunch of people coming in and saying, we want to be in the Northridge Park. The city really can't give referential treatment to people on city property who's signing up or something.
I can see where you might be, can't you?
So I mean, you just can't, that's just, so I don't think it's going to be, you know, based on the historical demand turnout, it's an issue for you, but since you have to start in tomorrow in the Northridge Park, but it's kind of hard to steer people to say, no, no, you can't be there.
You'd be a guy in that park. Does a sign up sheet on line?
Nope. No, it hasn't been approved yet, so it's not a little...
Is that tonight, Jim, in the town? I just have a question, I mean, if, if it's a 10 by 10 spot for $20, or 20 by 20 spot for $20, whatever the price is, if you have more than one spot, then you'd have to pay for each spot that you have. So you technically could keep his three spots or four spots as long as he pays for it.
$20 bucks a spot, yeah.
You know, because anybody then can go out to Arapahoe and Aspen and say, I want five spots, and I'll, I'll pay you for those spots.
Yeah, it's, I think as long as, when you come down to the grand scheme, it's, you know, if you guys are able to keep, keep your spots and keep your, see, however you want to look at it, because you've had your gardens in those areas for as long as you have, which, you know, and I can respect that, you know, I know you've invested, invested into the dirt there, so you'd like to see your spots stay there, but, and I agree with, you know, we have to keep that on the need and keel, is if, if anyone has, you know, four spots or whatever, or 20 by 20, you would have to be kept on the same. Or if you have a 20 by 20 by 60, or 40 by 60, you'd have to pay for the same as, you know, that would be 20 by 20 spots.
That's fine.
Okay.
If you look though, just saying, it's in those rules here where it says to each house will be allowed to do once, one plot. So we would have to change that?
Yep.
Because that was a discussion before, can they have one plot, two plots, 10 plots, whatever they want, but then...
Oh, that's to get away from the guy that comes and says they'll have 10 plots.
Yeah.
So, because we don't want to be in the garden business, you know?
Well, they don't. If you grandfather in, you grandfather in, you just hold those rules throughout.
I think that's City Attorney just saying...
I just, I, I'm uncomfortable with the city grandfathering people into a public space, a public garden. I mean, I understand that already the certain people, it's first come, first served basis, you don't have that problem. And then plus, if you open up, if the Park and Rec maybe here is a new, the new garden, and you keep the old garden, you're more responsible in those spaces.
So you're saying don't grandfather anybody in?
Well, I mean, I, I guess, when you say grandfather in, I mean, I don't know how that would look, just allowing the people here to go back to their old plots that they had. I just think you maintain those over the years, and you, it's kind of been a first come, first served basis, if that, is that right? And that's just sort of constant for years? And maybe other people just assume that that's, you know, your area, you keep up well, and that's fine, if that work happens this time, that's fine.
But it's public property.
What about the use for the nonprofit organizations? Would they be charged the $20 as well?
And there's only one organization that's nonprofit up there, as of right now?
Right now, yeah. Only one.
I'd say let Park and Rec decide that. I mean, we're, we're putting this back into their court, so I don't see why we're...
And then they'll come back to us and make an invasion.
Yeah, but, I say let's put this into their court.
So if you guys want to, I mean...
Yeah.
So the motion is out. Now we need to vote. Okay, do you guys have any other questions?
No.
John?
Try to take the motion.
Oh, yeah.
To let citizens sign up starting April 15th, and to continue as is for the Northridge Park Garden.
Okay. The motion did, right? Wait a second then. Johnson, Odi, vote.
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carried by all.
Thank you.
Now, I make a motion to have another community garden started at Aspen and Arapahoe, in the place that we previously talked about, and we'll plot it out. What did we figure, 20 by 20? 20 by 20 plots, so we're looking at what, Chuck, Dan?
20 by 200.
Okay, so then we will start the sign up, available for that. Could we get the names of the people that are...
Currently in Northridge?
In Northridge.
Yeah, because they'll be signing up.
All right. Okay, so where am I with my motion?
Second garden at Arapahoe and Aspen, 20 by 20 plots.
That would be, you know, maintained by the, till by the city, and with the existing rules, as far as we are happy with them, but we want to kick this over to Park and Rec. And we're, we're up against a timetable here, and they're not going to meet their mates. Yeah, I'm stuck.
So, how do we approve another community garden without approval of Park and Rec?
We can't. And I go, so it goes back to Sean's question of, would other people want to get involved in the community, or, and that is the initial complaint that started this whole thing.
Can I interject something?
Sure.
Park and Rec could still work on the rules, as far as putting it in Arapahoe and Arapahoe and Aspen, that's not in park, that's on city land, that's part of a regional park, that's not even developed. So I don't know that Park and Rec would really need to stay in and going there.
Okay.
They could work on the rules for the garden, but they really would, I don't know that they'd have to decide that whether it should go there or not.
All right, I, I propose the nomination that, as I have it so far, that the city then would start the tilling, and as far as the rules, they would be...
Determined by Park and Rec.
Thank you.
I will second that with a discussion. Sylvia?
I think we could, like, we have a special meeting for Park and Rec, because gardens need to start getting done, could only start thinking of...
So call a meeting before May?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
When you'll be out, tell me this.
We do have a secretary.
The Park and Rec part, that's for the, those regulations, right?
And just, and your input on gardening.
Okay.
I, I just, I've been, you know, we, we have been in contact with other park commissions, and they would like input on, on these different things, so, I mean, I understand Wendy's point that it is a, you know, it's city property and a regional park, so...
That we really have, I mean, it's not really even a park, it's just a land that...
Right, but their, their concerns are that they're, they're Park and Rec, and they got onto Park and Rec for, you know, the purposes of helping develop these areas that are within the city. So, with that being said, can we call a meeting?
What's the meeting today? Today is, oh, I don't remember, April?
April 14th.
April?
Oh, April.
Or, or April 14th today, correct?
Yeah.
Meetings are normally on Tuesday, can we go ahead and do the 22nd of April? Try and get ahold of Park and Rec, 22nd or 20th.
That'd give a week, a week to connect everybody, and see who can show up, we don't need three or four for a forum.
No. I'll cover it for you.
I still got a time, so I, and I'm not canceling it. If you want to have a meeting without me, that's fine, I love to have a board, doesn't matter.
I mean, we just really need the parks commissions there, who do they, I mean, right?
I can, I might, I can...
Who's the secretary?
I have to look, Sharon O'Dell, maybe? I have to look, I'd have to get her mail.
So, but I can send out the, I can send out the... So if we send the information...
I can send out a notice to everybody that you're calling a special meeting for next Tuesday night at 7:00 at City Hall.
And Kurt could run the meeting, because he's president, right?
Kurt would run the meeting, yeah. It'd have to be posted, because it's a special meeting, so it has to be 72 hours posting, so you wouldn't be able to do it this week anyway, it would have to be next week.
Right.
Because it's got to be posted for 72 hours.
So if you could go, you know, send out something tomorrow and ask her if she can possibly run the meeting?
Well, he does anyway.
Right, that's it.
If he's not there, the vice president, the vice chair would run it.
I have a motion on the floor, Stacey.
I have a motion.
Motion by Mark, second by you, to start a second garden at Arapahoe and Aspen, 20 by 20 plots, that will be maintained until, by the city rules, to be determined by Park and Recreation.
By April 22nd, right? Be determined. Can you move on then? Yep. Motion by Mark, second by Michelle, and Odi vote.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mark?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carried by all. So I'm a little confused. What are we doing?
I don't know anything.
What are we doing?
We are having a community garden at Northridge.
I know that, what are we doing with the other one?
We have approved to start a new garden over at Arapahoe and Aspen. We will meet with Park and Rec on the 22nd of April, if they are available. We're calling a special meeting, Wendy will contact President of Commissions to do that, to discuss the rules and regulations of the two community gardens.
Thanks for clarification.
Am I right, or not?
No.
Okay?
Yes.
Move on.
Yes. Okay, now that's it for the gardens and the dog park questions.
You guys good on the dog park? Because you had questions, Tricia.
Well, it looks like it's still in beginning works, so I want you guys to figure it out.
We, we, we haven't even talked about it as council yet. Sean, you want to talk about the, the findings that you found on, as far as the fencing goes?
The proposed site here in Northridge Park, fencing will almost over 15,000. And then site number two, the fencing come in at 7,500, which is south of town at the wastewater plant, but there's three quarters of the fencing's already up, so...
So those prices certainly are those council, we always just got to have a separate shop, and if there's going to have to be, there's something else that we would like to present to Park and Rec, some of that, to run with that, or see if there's community support. There seem to be, at the regional park meeting about dog park, with these kind, these kind of expenses, and nothing budget, it's going to have to be a fun basic type of thing, so...
And like you said, just for fencing was $15,000, that doesn't include the water?
Yeah, there's no water.
Parking, and, and be about...
No shelter.
$25,000, rough estimate. Got a question later?
I was going to ask Sean, the reason the two prices, 7 and 15, was that because the one on the south end park fence up there, how big are they going to be? Some people are concerned that you don't want to just build it 20 by 40, because they wanted several acres, so it's...
So it's, each encompasses a couple acres. And the reason why it's significantly less at the south end of town is that three quarters of the fence is already there.
Is that basically split?
Question, Sean, is that just material cost, or is that material end? That's installed.
Now we move on to Monroe's cleanup day, and handling program. May 3rd, 2014, pick up assistance, May 1st, 2014, you have to call and let them know if you've got something to be picked up. So we can move on to the standards and doors.
So, we can move on to the standard and Thor's proposed credit, rate, raise. That would raise to a double A, if that was an A plus.
Yeah, that's just information I'll just share with you.
I've got a question.
On the cleanup day, pick-up assistance, are we charging a fee for that?
That'd be for us to go pick it up?
Correct. I thought it was agreed upon, we were charging a fee to
We have five hours.
Five hour going.
They have to, uh...
It doesn't state that here, so...
If you want help with your, with your step up, per site pickup, five dollars, you have to register and prepay at City Hall. It's on May first. And pickup day will be May first.
Can you get a sticker done to put on the stuff, Wendy?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Uh, for that curb side help, um, can I see if the boy scouts and girl scouts might help pick up that garbage?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All...
Yeah. I'll, I'll, I'll run it up.
On Thursday, this is...
Oh, not on Thursday, on that Saturday.
On that Saturday.
Yeah.
It'd be mostly big stuff that they probably would be able to help with unless they're older.
Like, like fifteen and odd?
Like teenage boys, right?
Teenage boys, yeah. And may I ask?
That's why we, as far as safety goes, as far as, uh, we've got the payroll available and anything else with the city guys on Thursdays, so, I, I realize that there are people that are not here in town, so that's why there are volunteers of us that are going to be helping out on Saturday. So, yeah, it would be appreciated. But we don't know until it's pre-registered exactly how many pickups we have, it could be four, it could be forty.
Okay. I'll ask.
Thank you.
Okay, then we move on to item S, alcohol compliance checkup day. I believe our loss failed, failed.
That's just for your information, they've been notified and they're going to be in there. We have a, um, policy with, I mean, the city has a policy regarding alcohol compliance.
That's... Was that their first offense?
Um, they haven't had one since two thousand and eight, so...
So, it almost went down to three years.
I have a question on this, um, so the first offense within a three-year period is a two hundred dollar fine, right?
Uh-huh.
Then they go training. Second offense within the three-year period is a five hundred dollar fine, you go to training. It's not until the third offense within a three-year period, a thousand dollar fine, if there's a liquor license. Can we bump that up to the second offense?
We pretty much followed everything else in the county and state. I guess if you want to take away someone's, like, business, I've never had anybody get the... I, I've never had anybody go that far. They had one in two thousand and eight, they haven't had one since.
Okay.
And it's now twenty-fourteen, so...
Alright.
Yeah, I think they take it pretty seriously.
Yeah. And to have, let you know, let you know the person that served, I guess, no longer has a job, so...
Okay, and then they provide us, they'll give you the, the training?
They can give you the training certificates, they pay the fine, or they can have a public hearing if they want, but I think they're going to waive it, that's the same fine. And they give us the certificate showing training.
Okay.
Where, where do they have the school for training?
The county does training.
The county does, okay.
Okay, then we move on to item I, city plan, planner. The city of Monroe has used the service of Northwest Associate Consultants since two thousand and one, and they have provided excellent practical work for the city. During the past few years, our planning needs have decreased tremendously and we have had reduced need for their service. Joanne Ross provides planning service to reform municipal development and is more familiar with our day-to-day operation and community. I would recommend that the city of Monroe use MDG for planning service. Ross does that at City Hall two days each month, and may have time to handle some planning items during these hours. We will track planning and EDA work separately. Any planning meetings before, so on so forth, that are done for developers, applicants, will be billed back to the same. Action needed motion to appoint a missile, development group, and planner. We're ready now, we'll get the notice, we might as well do so.
This will be an added expense on what we currently pay Joanne for?
Well, instead of paying, uh, firmness, what do you pay him? A hundred and twenty dollars an hour for this planning, we use him for planning.
And how often is he here?
Well, we use him with a lot of development questions, conditional use questions, he comes to planning meeting, you know, um, Joanne's rates are less, and she can do the same services for us.
What are her rates?
Eighty dollars. And she's current familiar with us? In, in some cases, you know, we have a project we're working on right now. Joanne is already working with these people and has been working with them for a couple months. And then prior, we would bring in Bob Firmness to help us with the planning questions. And it's kind of using two consultants when we can narrow that down to one consultant and save some fees.
He's not here to regular basis, it's just, we need him, and Joanne's here every week anyway, right?
She's here every other week.
Okay, that's right.
Well, twice a month. I think it's better service for the city and a reduced pay. And I don't really need him like that, because Bob Firmness has provided great service, but Joanne is here on a regular basis. And with the reduction in EDA, you know, going to a quarterly meeting, she has a little more time, I think she'll have a little more time during her regular hours here, so, some of that EDA time will be filled in with planning time.
And this is the letter you will be sending to Bob?
I've talked to Bob.
Okay, so he's kind of aware of it, so?
He's aware of it, yes. And understands it. It's, uh, it's a business decision, it will save the city money.
Alright, I have my promotion meant to, um, use Joanne as a planning through her firm, we miss not make her...
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben to prove Joanne for appointment, municipal development group as planner. I vote aye, Mark?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Motion carried by all. Okay, then we move on to item H, personnel committee.
Well, I think that's up to you. Well, yeah, I think we need to do some reappointing, because it really wasn't done exactly right until I asked me.
Appleland, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Can I ask some question about the EDA that you guys just approved? Oh, Joanne, how long has Joanne been employed by the city?
I'm sorry?
How long have we had Joanne doing the planning?
She hasn't, she's not done the planning for the city.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just kind of wondering, I mean, what's her main responsibility? What is...
The economic development authority.
Okay, so what's her main function, what does she hold city?
Well, she's...
Economic development.
Business.
Business recruitment retention.
And how many businesses has she been directly responsible for bringing in?
She also was in charge of all the central, the, um, the initiative foundation grants we've received over the last five years, we had fifty thousand dollars in grants, she's administered.
Well, how many, how many businesses has she been directly responsible for bringing to the city?
Expansion of Snap Fitness, helped with established Batman, so there was a restaurant owned by, I forget the woman's name, Alice. I can't think of Alice's last name. Oh, for the taco, for the taco thing is now, you know, Alice Bear. Alice Bear, kind of restaurants, helped with that and then helped sell that equipment. I'm trying to remember, she's been here a number of years, I...
But it's all she's direct for two businesses?
Well, it's more than, it's more than two businesses, it's just starting to be to be all off the town, I mean...
Then how much did we, I'm just kind of curious, because, I mean, I don't see a whole lot of business working in the town. And it seems like they're paying somebody a lot of money to do that, and I just haven't seen the results.
I think her job, although it's economic development, recruiting businesses is much more difficult than, um, one would hope. You know, Joanne spends a lot of time here, she's been here at least six years, I would say.
A lot of people spend a lot of time doing things, but don't get things done.
I don't think that's the case. We've had a, a lot of programs, she's done a lot of work for us as far as promoting our city, brochures, business retention, put together some land programs, helped just secure, um, Jackie D's. I'm trying to remember what else.
She wasn't directly responsible for Jackie D's?
She certainly helped with the program together for us, working with the banking finances.
She also, um, you mentioned the initiative foundation grant, she got grants for many years, that was what started the, um, HCP, Health Communities Partnership, that has Highway Twelve grew and had the community private, went into parks. And a lot of her wages were paid through that grant, through the initiative foundation. So, half of her wages, um, every year have been paid from the initiative foundation out of Little, um, Little Falls.
Well, I know that, I mean, it seems like that she's gone a lot of leg with it, but I'm not seeing a lot of results. I mean, you can hire and continue, but I'd like to see a little bit more results, because, I mean, we've had one or two new businesses here in the last year or two? I mean, when I asked you how many you've been directly responsible, you had a really kind of spin part, you actually kind of dodged the question until I asked it again. I mean, it seems like that's just a lot of money going out the window.
This, that's on here?
And I, I kind of wonder, I know you didn't question that, why I had to bring that up after it was even...
This, this is totally separate, it's two different things. This, this right here is to let Joanne work on planning that she's already here. It, it's taken away, um, Northwest Associated Consultants that we already have. So, if we have any planning that's coming, Joanne will be the one that will work on it. But the issues that you bring up will be discussed at a later, at our EDA meeting tomorrow with Joanne. Okay, back to reading what?
Okay, are we done with the discussion?
I don't know.
Yeah, the last time we appointed, uh, commissions or places, and, uh, when Mark was nominated to accept the second mayor, well, he abstained, oh. When, when we put the personnel to vote, neither you nor Mark abstained, so he sort of abstained and then that would have changed the vote.
It would have changed the vote, you're probably right on that, but as we have discussed a month ago, to change up the personnel committee, it was discussed, it was motions, and it was in place, the motion was made. And the reasons the motions were made and discussed was because Mark and I have done substantial amount of work with the city in the last year and, I think, four months. Um, as you can clearly see, there's a lot of stuff that we do in this personnel committee, which is our community gardens, um, the dog park, a lot of issues that come up with city staff, and just, you know, multiple things. And in the discussion of the city gardens and everything else, I, I don't want to offend anybody or anything like that, but Mark and I have, as this was discussed a month ago, a better rapport with our city staff. Um, I have discussed this since we put the motion in place a month ago with our mayor, giving him my reason as to why it needs to stay the way it is with Mark and I, because it was stated a month ago that he doesn't want to deal with our city staff. And we, I mean, we can discuss this, but I, I normally choose not to discuss this, you know? But it keeps coming up, so, there is a lack of respect that our mayor, if we were to put our mayor on this committee, there is a lack of respect that he would, that there would be for our city staff. And it would, I don't see things getting accomplished, because when we go to these meetings twice a month, a lot of work is put into this, and we come to our, our monthly meetings and we get no input. So, I would see it as a waste of time to change the city, the way things are right now, because the way things are right now, there's work getting done within our city. If we change it, as I stated a month ago, we will move backwards. So, I went, the motion was made a month ago, I say we keep the motion the way it is.
Alright, if you want to keep the motion the way it is, then I want some straight answers from some people and not being turned around all the time, and what's going on, like, with the soup kitchen and all this stuff. I got to call and try and get information, because I was promised that lady's name from the state, and I still haven't got it, and I still haven't gotten her phone number. And that was over a week ago, I asked her that, and I still don't get it.
And it's in our package.
I got it right now, I got it.
Yes.
I got to follow into it right now, because I don't know what's going on.
Right, and, and it was, and it was stated a month ago, there's
I heard that.
There is a, it was put in place.
Okay, and how come Mark asked me, how come I don't come to these personnel committees? She says, it says the mayor always used to show up to them.
Yeah, the mayor was a part of that.
I, I understand that the mayor was, Scott, uh, our ex-mayor, Mr. Sanskowski, was a part of that, um...
All the mayor's, right?
Yes, and at that time, we, when Scott resigned, it was made a motion to direct, which myself was already a part of that, and Councilman Prosser. And in doing that, um, last month, we had directed Barb to put in all the minutes from starting last month, which would be March, all the minutes from our personnel committee meetings continuing forward, but instead, Barb actually went back, starting in January, to currently, so all of the minutes that we've ever had in our meetings is up to date, is in the mayor's box, is not only in the mayor's box, but it is in every council member's box, as be directed for to do so. So, everybody is up to date as to what's going on in our personnel committees, in our meetings. Um, if you want any information on the community center kitchen, if there was a motion made on that to direct myself, Barb, and Wendy to be the committee to run the ki, the community center kitchen, which we have done. Wendy has addressed that issue with multiple pages here as to her, um, pardon me?
The timeline.
The timeline that she has, it is all in there, there's nothing, any questions that have been asked have an answer.
It was also under your direction, Mr. Mayor, that, that you, you direct us to, go ahead, Ellen.
Yes, Mark, I don't, I don't mean no offense or nothing.
I'm just, just reminding you.
I'm not using some answers when I ask questions. And I wait a week, two weeks down the road, and I still haven't got an answer, I got to do some investigating to find out who this person is, or this state inspector is, because I don't get what I want when I'm asking somebody for the information.
All the information has always been out there, um, I, I don't understand why you think you're not getting the information. All the information has always been out there. Um, I, I don't understand why you think you're not getting the information because every committee that is out there, the line, the line last month stays, boy scouts, girl scouts, every organization has this information. They have all been in contact with the city, I'm sorry, Jolene Ziegler from the state. So all of these organizations have this information, so this information is not hidden from anybody. The information is available to the public at any time as it is to you. But unfortunately, you do not have to send email.
You have to, I send email.
You have.
It's my wife's email.
Exactly. We do not have.
Big deal.
Because when people go onto the website, I, I, I could be wrong.
Okay, my door is always open. How come you don't stop over there anymore? You got that bad feelings or what is it?
No.
I can talk to your husband Jim, but it's like you, you just blow a guy off. You don't even want to talk to a person.
Um, as I stated before, Mr. Mayor, there is gonna be no offense taken here, but, um, I want to move forward in the city.
Well, I just want to.
And that is my, that is my job is to move forward in the city, appointing a different personnel committee who just, who has no respect for our city staff, cannot work with our city staff, would put our city backwards. And I am not willing to do that. That is not what I, what I was appointed to do. I was appointed to take the city forward. And every meeting, the stuff, the same stuff comes back and it's time to be done with it.
It's not when you started, oh, when you started campaigning, you weren't saying that. I busted my back for you campaigning in the same way with Scott and get stabbed in the back.
Do you want to talk about Pax that anyway?
No, we're done.
Oh, no.
You sure you want to meet him?
Oh.
That, that is not what we're far kind of moving the city forward and that's my plan and my intentions for doing that.
We're talking about city staff before too.
Yes, I am. And I worked with my city staff. I do, I may not improve with everything that my city staff does, but I can walk into that building at any time and sit down and talk with them and tell them my concerns and address the issues that I have. I can walk up to Wendy right now and say, you know what? As I did earlier, then I have a question here. I walked up, I can walk up to Barb and say, you know what, Barb, I don't understand this. What are you doing? Why are you doing this? The same thing with Sean. If I have a question with Sean, I can walk up to him and have a, a civil conversation with them to get the issues addressed. And I do not foresee that coming.
Alright, I walked in one day and I asked something, I signed some checks and something like that. And Barb said something to me. And so I went home and I talked to Mark and Mark got ahold of this person and we come back. And the next day I called back up there and then said that I said this and I never said anything. And I didn't have a witness with me. And I had to go to the Lions' team in order to get this number for this Joanne from the state. At least somebody on the Lions cooperated with me and knew my name.
There's nothing being hidden. It's all out there. If, if Lori Wilhamp can walk up there or Teresa Anderson, which is two organizations, I think, uh, Markington is out there too. He's from the relief association. They had to contact the city, the state regarding their permit for their waffles, their permit for.
I know I gotta get permits for that.
Exactly.
That's for the kitchen being pulled.
They had to contact, so obviously that information is out there because three organizations are sitting here right now that all got that information. So I don't know why you're not getting it or if the interest, I, I have no idea. But all three of these organizations have gotten that information, have all been in contact with our state.
Well, how come you didn't stop over and give it to me then when I asked?
And that's not my responsibility to do that.
I asked you in a decent way. Let's just forget it. Move on to miscellaneous. We've got a meeting with the Board of Equalizations Monday, April twenty-eighth at six P M at the community center. City council meeting Monday, April twenty-eighth at seven P M. In open forum, I'll acknowledge Sean and them for their public work.
May our question, are we gonna, do we need to have a council meeting on the twenty eighth?
Yes.
What are we discussing? Is there something in the works that we need to take care of or in the?
Well, if you're gonna have your parking wreck thing on the twenty-second, we've gotta discuss the garden on the twenty-eighth.
Well, let's see if we can get to. Parker, Mark? We can, do side by your turn, Mark?
On the twenty-eighth, we have the equalization.
Quarter of the equalization at six P M here.
Oh, it's seven, twenty, six P M.
Oh, we're doing acknowledgements? Are we still up to that? No, can we do that? Um, I do want to acknowledge public works for, uh, all their hard work with the snow pond. It's my understanding with our last snowstorm that Sean was here at one in the morning. So they, those guys really go above and beyond for the city in the snow when possibly have another winter storm coming. So, um, I do want to say thank you to those guys for everything that they've done.
I'd like to acknowledge Sean for all the hours he put in. And it moved us backwards for all the snow he had to remove and some people don't acknowledge him for what he does.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to acknowledge, um, Dan Greenwood for his, um, certification or his award.
He is certified.
He got an.
He hasn't been certified yet.
Yes, and we did get the handover.
So we need a second on this.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second motion to adjourn.
Motion by Michelle, second by Ben, to adjourn. Rock, you have a vote? Otto?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.